Greetings and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome and good morning. This is the official meeting of the Lewis and Clark County Commission for February 4th, 2025. I'm Tom Rolf, I'm Vice Chairman of the Commission, and I'm going to be sitting in for our Chairman Candace Payne, who is absent this morning. To my left is Brandy Spangler, she keeps track of everything and makes sure it's properly noticed and publicized. Greg Manale is our Director of the Department of Planning. And then to my right is Commissioner Andy Hunthausen and Chief Administrative Officer Roger Balt. Nico Hash from the County Attorney's Office will be here in a little bit, and we'll sit between them there. So let's start out, we have some consent action items, Mr. Balt, if you want to present those, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Rolf and Commissioner Hunthausen. The first item is Item 2A on the agenda today, Resolution 2025-10, declaring county property to be surplus property. Staff recommends approval of that item. The next item is Item 2B, Resolution 2025-11, ordering a refund of taxes, fees, assessments paid by Justin and Bridgette D. Evans in the amount of $304.68. Staff recommends approval of that item. And Commissioners, the last item for you to consider is Item 2C, which is the vendor invoice to the Department of Environmental Quality, and staff recommends approval of that item as well. Thank you, Commissioners.
Any questions for Mr. Balt?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
Is there any public comment on these consent items? Any public comment? There being none? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Consent Action Items 2A, B, and C as presented.
Second, is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
No discussion? Move to a vote. All those in favor of Consent Action Items 2A, B, and C as presented by Mr. Balt, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Two to zero. Item number three on our agenda today is Resolution 2025-9, intent to transfer property between certain government entities. Mr. Horn?
Mr. Chairman Rolf, good morning. Mr. Hunthausen, good morning. My name is Kevin Horn. Spelling on that is first name Kevin, K-E-V-I-N, last name is Horn, H-O-R-N-E. Glad to see most people made it to work today. It's pretty treacherous out there today. A lot of agencies hard at work, removing snow. What a great day to talk about snowplows. So that is on today's agenda. It is item number three. It is entitled Resolution 2025-9, intent to transfer property between certain governmental entities. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Montana Code Annotated 7-8-101 authorizes the sale or trade of property to any city, town, or political subdivision as the interests of its inhabitants require. That is not necessary for the conduct of the county business. This resolution of intent is to surplus and transfer two snowplows that the Road Division is replacing, in 1996 International with 145,845 miles, and 1999 International with 122,460 miles, to Broadwater County for the market value of $25,000 each, and a total of $50,000. The public hearing will be advertised in the Helena Independent Record the next two Saturdays, February 8th and February 15th, and written public comment will be accepted until 4:00 PM on Wednesday, February 19th, 2025, at the Lewis and Clark County Clerk and Recorder's Office. The public hearing has been scheduled for Thursday, February 20th, 2025, at 9:00 AM in Room 330 of the City-County Building, 316 North Park Avenue, Helena, Montana. Anyone who may want more information on the sale of the two snowplows to Broadwater County should contact the Public Works Department at 406-447-8037. Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners approve Resolution of Intent 2025-9 to transfer property between certain governmental entities and open the comment period. Commissioners, we're happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Horn, just for purposes of being open and transparent and trying to explain things to the community education-wise, the reason that we're surpleasing these two snowplows is that we, part of our replacement plan is coming into effect here. And we've recently, over the last several years, actually, it's taken to get them all into place. But four new snowplows, am I correct? Yeah, four new snowplows, and thus, these snowplows that we've taken such great care of, I see Dustin out there takes care of all of our machinery, they still have some useful life, and that this process gives us the opportunity to work with other local governments or other government entities to make sure that those snowplows find a new home and are useful for those local governments. I just wanted to, you said that in your comments, I just was kind of getting down a little bit more into the nitty-gritty and maybe talking about it a bit, that is part of the process that we have for updating our equipment. And this is great that we have this process now to be able to work with other local governments. So just to comment, I don't know if there's a question in there or something more that you want to explain, or?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hunthausen, great comments. Yes, we did order, let's go back in time just a hair. I got some notes this morning. We did receive, we have received four snowplows. They are replacements through our capital improvement plan. They do have life expectancy that we put in that capital improvement plan, that we save money for annually. So when their lifespan is up for us with the county, we can replace those. Two of the ones we received were ordered in May of 2021, so towards the end of the pandemic, it was tough to get equipment, as you realize. Or in 2025, it's taken us almost four years to get those two. The two freight liners are just arriving. One is still in ice state, just getting some wiring done on it. Those trucks were ordered in December of 2023. So there's been a little bit more rapid turnaround on those trucks. The 96 that we're selling is 29 years old. The 99 that we're selling is 26 years old. And my hat's off to my partner in the audience, Mr. Dustin Knoll, our shop manager in his fleet of mechanics. They do an outstanding job on a day-to-day basis to keep those trucks maintained, to keep them in the snow for us. And they'll be good for our sisters in Broadwater County, our friends in Broadwater County, I should say. And we just recently surplus one also to City of East Helena. That leaves us with one left. Still great truck, so we have some interest on that vehicle as well. But it is a good plan. It's a good savings plan. Our forefathers that set that up for us back in the day, I commend them. We're reaping their benefits today for what they set up in those capital improvement plans.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
And given if I remember correctly, that money that we get from this, from surpleasing these vehicles out goes back into that capital improvement plan to help towards the next batch of?
Mr. Chairman, that is correct. One tidbit, some folks might have been not around long enough, but Mr. John Lamb, he retired in 2007. Commissioner Hunthausen probably recognizes that name. He was the first one that had that truck, one of the trucks that we're selling to Broadwater County. And I believe he did 36 years of service with the county, so he was a good guy, and we miss him dearly. So yeah, little tidbit.
All right. Well, that's great. Any other questions?
No, sir.
Our intent to make the, set the openness to the public in case anybody has any questions about this process, and then we'll be coming back to formalize the sale in a couple of weeks. Isn't that right?
Mr. Chair, that is correct. We'll check the Clerk and Recorder's Office today, February 20th, to see if there's any written comment. And of course, anybody is welcome to attend the public meeting for comment on the 20th as well.
All right. Thank you. Is there any, there'd be no further questions from the Commission? Is there any public comment on this matter? Any public comment? There being none? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve Resolution 2025-9, intent to transfer property between certain governmental entities as presented by Mr. Horn.
And I think we should add in there that we're going to be finalizing it, subject to public comment on the 20th of February.
Correct, Mr. Chair.
All right. Second, is there any, I guess, no public comment? We've got a motion on the table. Any other discussion?
No, sir.
There being no further discussion, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2025-9, intent to transfer property between certain government entities as explained by Mr. Horn, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries two to zero. Next item on our agenda is a professional services contract with Loveland Consulting. Ms. Neiman?
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. My name is Drenda Neiman. I am the Health Officer, Department Director with Lewis and Clark Public Health. This morning, I have before you a professional services contract with Loveland Consulting in the amount of $10,000. Ms. Katie Loveland will be providing facilitation and design services for the Community Health Improvement Planning Process, which will begin this month in February and go through March. A grant from the Department of Public Health and Human Services was given to us in the amount of $10,000 for the purpose, exact purpose of this expense. So that is the funding source that will pay for this expense. The Community Health Improvement Planning Process occurs every three years in partnership with the Healthy Together Steering Committee, which is made up of several partners in the community, to include the Lewis and Clark Public Health, St. Peter's Health, United Way of the Lewis and Clark Area, Peer View Health Center, Rocky Mountain Development Council, Helena Indian Alliance, and Shodair Hospital. The Community Health Improvement Plan is a requirement for accredited health departments as well as accredited hospitals. And through, excuse me, through the Public Health Accreditation Board, which sets our standards for accreditation. The purpose is to develop a plan in collaboration with our community and create a collective agenda to address identified health-related issues that were identified out of our community health assessment. The priorities that were identified again for the second time in a row, so three years ago, we did the very same process, and those priorities were housing, chronic disease, and behavioral health. Those are the same priorities that we'll be addressing again this iteration of the Community Health Improvement Plan. So there will be three sessions happening in the month of February. The first session will be this Friday regarding housing, February 7th from 9:00 to 11:00. United Way of the Lewis and Clark Area is hosting at their office. The second priority is chronic disease, and that priority will be discussed on February 19th from 10:30 to 12:30 at St. Peter's Health. And then behavioral health, those discussions will happen on February 19th as well, from 3:00 to 5:00 at St. Peter's Education Center. We'll then have a culminating meeting in March on the 20th from 3:00 to 5:00 at the St. Peter's Education Center to finalize the plan. So the idea is to pull community partners together, have discussions, and set goals and objectives for each of these priorities, and develop a plan that we as a community can work on together. With that, Mr. Chair, that concludes my presentation. I request approval and can answer any questions.
Thank you. And is the, are the public meetings that you referred to, are they listed on your website someplace? If you will have a question?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and Commissioner Hunthausen, they, on our website, on all of our social media, then we've sent it out in a press release to all of our media outlets, hoping to really get a good turnout from the public to participate in these conversations.
Great. Any other questions from the Commission?
Mr. Chair, Health Officer Neiman, I could, this is par for the course. This is nothing new. It's a new plan and all of that, we're new process, but in terms of the process we've used in the past, this is nothing new. So this is kind of the way we've done this all along, each time we have, each iteration of the plan. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, we call it the cycle of life in public health. We start out with the community health assessment. That happens every three years. We just finished that at the end of last year, and it's published. That has all of the great data that helps us understand what the health status of our community is. We roll right into a new Community Health Improvement Plan, right on the heels of that assessment. And then we do a lot of internal work as well after that Community Health Improvement Plan is set for community collective action. We then look at that collective, that community plan, and we'll update our organizational plan the following year. So it's a cycle that we do every three years. And it's a, I'm trying to remember how far back, we're at least 12 years into the cycle.
I knew the answer to that question. I just wanted to, Mr. Chair, sorry. I just wanted to reiterate. And I'll be there as much as I can at the session. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great. All right. Any other questions? If not, is there any public comment? Any public comment on this item? If not, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve this professional services contract with Loveland Consulting as presented by Health Officer Neiman.
Second, is any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner?
Thank you. Just a comment that any folks that are watching, or anyone in the audience, share with others, be part of the, part of the discussions, come out, the more the merrier, and the better product in the end if the community gets involved. So I encourage people to participate in our health improvement planning process. Thank you, Commissioner.
The more, the more public comment, the better. Wonderful. Any other discussion? There being none, let's move to a vote on the professional services contract with Loveland Consulting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion passes. Two to zero. Next item on the agenda is a termination of professional services contract between Lewis and Clark County and Good Samaritan Ministries. Ms. McBride?
Good morning, Chair, Commissioner. My name is Kelly McBride. I'm the Director of your Department of Criminal Justice Services, and I have two items that kind of complement each other, so we'll be back to back. The first before you is a request to terminate the 2023-2027 professional services contract between Lewis and Clark County and Good Samaritan Ministries for operation of the Certified Peer Support Specialist Drop-In Center. I know that sounds bad, we're terminating, but there'll be more to come. So my executive summary, the county entered into a seven-year professional services contract with Good Samaritan Ministries in January 2023 to provide operational support of $40,000 annually for the Our Place Drop-In Center. Additionally, the county has paid for the Our Place Drop-In Center lease at their location on Last Chance Gulch. The Our Place Drop-In Center provides certified peer support specialist-led community services for client-driven behavioral health programming needs. Good Samaritan Ministries has faithfully met and reported on the contract deliverables. With Good Samaritan Ministries relocating the Our Place Drop-In Center in January of 2025, the county has terminated the building lease and wishes to terminate the existing professional services contract and enter into a new professional services contract. The new professional services contract will be presented to the Commission this morning. The request staff asked that the Commission, asked the Commission to terminate the professional services contract between Lewis and Clark County and Good Samaritan Ministries dated January 12, 2023, for operation of the Our Place Drop-In Center. Any questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner, go ahead.
So you just said it, but I'm just going to say it plain and clear. We're terminating this contract, and then in the next item, we're going to consider a new contract.
Yes, you said it best.
Okay, well, no.
I stumbled over my words.
I said it simply. No, you did it. You did great. I just wanted people to know that we still are engaged in this endeavor with Good Samaritan, and we'll be considering a new contract here in just a minute. But first have to set the old one aside. It's the process. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Any other questions from the Commission? There being, being, is there any public comment on this item? Any public comment? See, no public comment? Commissioner, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the termination of the professional services contract between Lewis and Clark County and Good Samaritan Ministries as presented by Kelly McBride, Director McBride.
Second, is there any just further discussion? I think it's been pretty well explained, and we'll get into the meat of the new contract in a moment here. All right. Any further, since there's no further discussion, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of the termination of the professional services contract between Lewis and Clark County and Good Samaritan Ministries as explained by Ms. McBride, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Two to zero. Now, let's go on to the pleasant part.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioner. Again, Kelly McBride, Director of your Department of Criminal Justice Services. I do want to point out that in the audience this morning is Teresa Ortega, who is the Director of Good Samaritan Ministries, and Michaela, who is the manager of the Our Place Drop-In Center. And so I'll just jump right in. Before you today is a professional services contract between Lewis and Clark County and Good Samaritan Ministries for operation of the Certified Peer Support Specialist Drop-In Center. Lewis and Clark County's Department of Criminal Justice Services conducted a request for proposals for peer support drop-in services. The county received one proposal from Good Samaritan Ministries. The Evaluation Committee reviewed the proposal and has negotiated an agreement with the offerer. The Department of Criminal Justice Services and the county's designated mental health fund have traditionally budgeted funds to provide the community with peer support drop-in services. Good Samaritan Ministries has operated a best practices drop-in center since December of 2019 with a professional services contract through the county's Department of Criminal Justice Services, and lease payments made on behalf of the drop-in center through the county's mental health fund. With Good Samaritan Ministries locating the Our Place Drop-In Center in January of 2025, the county wishes to combine the two funding sources, $40,000 annually from the Department of Criminal Justice Services, and $60,000 annually from the county's mental health fund, to provide overall operational support of $100,000 annually to ensure ongoing provision of certified peer support specialist-led community services for client-driven behavioral health programming needs. That is a mouthful. The purpose of this funding is to provide peer-led support programming for those in the community struggling with behavioral health challenges. The contract before you today will support the existing operations with $100,000 annually through January 31st of 2032. Staff asks that the Commission to approve the professional services contract between Lewis and Clark County and Good Samaritan Ministries for operation of the Our Place Drop-In Center. And I can ask, I can answer questions?
Maybe we'd like to hear from some of the folks from Good Samaritan?
I think that would be wonderful.
All right.
Good morning, Teresa Ortega from Good Samaritan Ministry. I've got a little cough, so if I have to stop and cough. Commissioner Rolf, Commissioner Hunthausen, Mr. Blatts, thank you for having us here today and going over that contract. I absolutely did not think we were going to get to this point for a while, but we did it. So what would you like to ask? I've got some stuff for you.
Maybe you could tell us a little bit about, for the public's interest, and there's probably folks watching on TV, they're familiar with the old location of Our Place, and that that's been closed down. Tell us a little bit about how that's going to move forward.
Sure. So we are currently, we have signed a six-month lease with Habitat for Humanity for the building, the old restore building, the upstairs floor. It's a phenomenal place. We were so lucky to be able to get this. There's plenty of room. Clients are making their way down there. As in today, the cold weather, we will be sending our van out to pick people up, if they don't have a place to go, so they could come to Good Sam. As Kelly eloquently gave you an outline of Good, Our Place, it is preparing for treatment with the groups we have at Our Place. There are two times a day, 9:30 and 1:30, and during the rest of the time, the staff work with clients for their personal information that they've lost. Maybe it's driver's license, ID, Medicare, anything like that. That's the entity that will work with those folks. Folks come into Good Sam's at the Assistance Ministry. They'll also go down to Our Place to get that done. It's just a better flow of making it work. We also, at Our Place, we help people with sustainability for either their life, basically, and finding the treatments they need, whether it's drug treatment, mental health, whatever, alcohol. We've also touched base with some that are dealing with gambling issues, too. So we do a huge amount of referrals with a hand-over-hand referral to people, so they don't just get sent on their own. I want to go over some things for you, some numbers for you, to show you how Our Place fits in this community. It's a very viable program. It's a very needed program. So through our Assistance Ministry, we served 186 people in housing, which is rent and crisis centers, and hotels to get people off the street. That was in the tune of $82,000. Many of the people we served have come through Our Place to get to the next step in life. So being with Good Samaritan entity of Good Samaritan, we're able to pick them up for the next step. Auto and Transportation, we've served 81 people in that area. These are the top five areas of service for Good Samaritan. We have provided numerous people bus tickets, rides to treatment centers out of Helena to get the services they need. In that area, we served, we came to the tune of $21,000. So that Our Place was again a piece of that, and mostly that is from Our Place to get people to the next step. Again, a link between Good Samaritan and Our Place. Utilities, we've helped people with propane. Propane is a huge issue, especially in this weather. I'm sure you understand that. It's just freezing. And I already know this morning of one gentleman who's got frostbite because he was out last night. So Michaela, our lead peer support is on that right now. She's actually working on it right now to see what she can find for that individual. So there are other needs that people have that may not fall into that. We call those life experiences and needs. Those are day-to-day issues that you and I may take for granted. The folks at Our Place are no different than someone who's in an apartment or a place that has the same needs. We help people with many things. Maybe it's helping them with some clothing, some boots, to get into, to submit an application for an apartment, things like that. We have done that. And we've also, just this last month, we housed two people out of Our Place in Street Outreach. Street Outreach is another entity which feeds into Our Place down on the streets. Total for those five areas, which includes the assistance that came out of Our Place, was $151,000 that that team worked together to get people served. There are also day-to-day needs that are very simple that we help folks with that we didn't pull up. So I would say we're close to $200,000 with that whole team together. There, I was going to touch a little bit on Hunthausen, because we have helped people that are homeless. And again, many have come through Our Place to get to the place for more help and help them with their housing. So this year of 2024, five individuals were helped with Hunthausen funds, and remember, that is a grant, and that is a loan for people to come back, so they could pay it back. that is a grant, and that is a loan for people to come back, so they could pay it back, and we can help more people in the future. It doesn't sound like a lot, but five people takes a lot of work and to get them in. In that, for this year alone, we put in $7,861. Overall, for our Hunt-Housen this year, there were 114 payments returned in the total of $11,000, a little over $11,000. Those numbers, return payments, are people that are paying from the last couple of years. They have continued to pay for us to make that work. So that's exciting to see that happen. Street Outreach, which directly links with our place, served 99-plus people this year, and I know there were more than 99. So those folks, they're on the streets. Our place, Good Samaritan, Street Outreach, we pride ourselves in taking care, if you will, of the most severe and needed issues with people. We work a lot with people with mental health on the streets. We've got people that are in mid-crisis with their addictions. Our place, or Street Outreach, takes people to our place to start going to groups, and we've seen that over and over again. Street Outreach also refers people to other entities in the community. One last one I thought was very interesting is Our Place, last but not least, served just over 6,000 people this last year. So I'm going to say there's between a 20% and 30% repeat, and of those repeat people, those are folks that have severe mental health, are not welcome in other places, and have nowhere to go. Our place is there to serve them during the day. Now that we do have a grant now with Lewis and Clark Human Services, that we've got money for crisis hotels, and we're already using that to get people off the streets at night. So it's pretty interesting. The other departments we work with in town is Helena Police Department is amazing with our place. If we need anything, they're there, no problem. We have very few physical issues working with people, and I think that is because our place staff respect people and are, I don't know how to say, they're genuine with the folks they serve. There's no judgment on anything. So I think that helps, obviously, with not having a lot of hairy issues, if you will, down there. We work with PureView. We often take people across the street. Well, we did take them across the street. Our new place, we will be able to get to another PureView office shortly, not far from us. So we work with PureView in getting people down there, making sure they meet their appointments, and we've talked to the case managers at PureView as an entity, a person in that individual's life. Many Rivers are close friends of ours. We work with them very much. I like to say sometimes we have a red phone, a hotline to them. They will always take our call. Vendors on the street call us. What do we do? There's someone on the streets, and either Street Outreach or our place will get in their vehicle and go down and see what they need to do to talk to the person to get them to move. So our new building, I think it's a great location. It's a little farther to walk, but on the first day we opened, we had 10 individuals. They had been waiting for us to open. That's continuing to go as we, day by day. They're very happy with the building. They've helped decorate it themselves. They've set it up. They've come in, and we've got some folks that are contractors that are homeless, have fallen on hard times, that have been part of the building and putting it together. It's pretty amazing to have that. We have PureView down the street from us, over by Target. It's not that far, across from Target. We have Good Sam's down the street if they need anything from Good Sam's. We've got lots of food places around town in that general area. We're looking to do more community outreach in that area and to be part of that community as well. So.
Great, great. Now, my, this money is to run your facility, basically, during the day to help these folks, and it sounds like with a six-month lease on the current facility, you've got plans to get into a more permanent facility, is that right?
Yes, we do. So we will have another facility to go to. It will be used during the day only when two other programs are outside. So we will have no contact with the budget of those other two programs. This is Good Samaritan, will rent from Family Promise only for daytime between, I think it's 8:30 and 3:00, only. It's a very separate budget.
And I assume that's, the plan is to be there in about six months, is that right?
We sure hope so, but, you know, we're still waiting for one last signature to get our Family Promise in the building phase, and there's a lot of snow right now, so I'm not sure how much they'll be able to do, and contractors are very busy. I know myself, it takes forever to get them, and then something comes up, so.
All right. Any questions, Mr. Commissioner?
Not questions at this time, but I'll have comment here when we get to the voting phase.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Is there any public comment on this item? Any public comment? There being no public comment, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve the professional services contract between Lewis and Clark County and Good Samaritan Ministries as presented by Director McBride.
Second, is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I do, believe it or not. I'm sure you're surprised.
Oh, yes.
But I appreciate the comments and kind of the understanding, helping to understand what the Drop-In Center does, and I just wanted to kind of reiterate how important this is in the bigger picture, in the cog of things that are happening out there, one of the cogs and things that are happening out there. And the way I look at it is that there's a continuum of crisis care, and really, the Drop-In Center is right at that beginning stage of keeping people out of crisis or responding to crisis, all the way up to hospitalization, beyond the other end of things. And in between there, we have opportunity for the crisis response team. Hopefully, Journey Home's going to be opening here soon. We have a great local police force that really does try to implement their crisis intervention training on the streets. They work with folks that are in tough shape. But the Drop-In Center plays a key role, and this investment that we're considering today, in my mind, on behalf of the taxpayers, is minor compared to if these folks were having to use the ED to get warm, the emergency department to get warm at the hospital, or to be there on a regular basis, time after time after time. Or, in many cases, folks end up in our detention center because there's no other option for the police and folks to use. So the Drop-In Center, it plays a key role, and Teresa described that, Kelly described that pretty well, but those folks that really need an entrance, sometimes it's a soft entrance into therapeutic services, or I can't get social security or can't even apply for it because I don't know how, but I don't have an ID, or I lost my driver's license, I can't apply for an interview because I don't even have a clean shirt to wear, or a place to take a shower, wash my clothes, or anything like that. So the Drop-In Center finds people in sometimes in their toughest moments and helps them take the next step to, whether it's recovery, applying for housing, getting an ID, engaging with a therapist, and then, as was discussed, the entrance into primary care as well. And we help, it's one of the things that we invest into our Human Services Task Force, is healthcare for the homeless or those that don't have any other way to access healthcare. And the Drop-In Center is one of those entities out there that really helps people enter into those moments. So from my perspective, it keeps people off the streets, keeps people from being, spending their time in the emergency room and in the jail, but it also has much better outcomes for those people that are in the greatest need. So the investment is well worth it from my perspective, and I think, I've been down to the new site, it's a great spot, took a tour and looked at it. Lots of room and lots of opportunity there. I'm glad they're making it their own, and I think in many ways, it's centrally located, as Teresa mentioned. So things will be good, you know, safety and access to behavioral health, addictive health, healthcare. I think that we can't be maybe doing a greater good than some of this work right here, and it is some of the most important in our community. So I'm happy to support this professional services contract, and I appreciate those that are working hard every day to work with the people in the greatest need in our community, and thanks to Kelly and her team for their support out there, Drenda and your team as well. I know you have a role to play, so thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll leave it at that.
And I would just like to say, I really appreciate the heart of the folks at Good Samaritan and the work that you've done for many years and continue to do. I appreciate the organization that's been put into this whole process, the list of things that you've agreed to provide and not provide with this money, and I think it's an important part in the whole process. And thank you for your giving heart. Thank you for the hard work that you do, and I'm anxious to see your Good Samaritan program continue and to increase as we go forward. Thank you very much. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I think I'm good to go.
All right. We'll move to a, we've had no public comment, we've got a motion on the floor. All those in favor of approving the professional services contract between Lewis and Clark County and Good Samaritan, as explained by Ms. McBride, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes two to zero. Next item on our agenda is a request for modification of conditional approval of the Aerosmith subdivision, and we've got Planner Rachel Ward here.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. My name is Rachel Ward with Community Development and Planning. I'm here today to present a request from Kim Smith Properties to modify the preliminary approval of four interconnected subdivisions known as the Aerosmith, the Blacksmith, Coppersmith, and Wordsmith subdivisions. These modification requests would change findings of fact presented during the preliminary approval of the four subdivisions, referencing the use of sequencing batch reactor as part of the public wastewater treatment system. The applicant is now looking to use a Level 2 recirculating sand filter treatment system as part of that public wastewater treatment system that serves, again, all four of these subdivisions. So with your approval, we do have four agenda items, but I'd like to, and before we go into each of those individual public hearings, would like to give one large overview of these four subdivisions and the modifications, hopefully because it will be easier to understand and also because the modifications are really so integrally tied.
If I might just stop just a minute, we have four items. They're all similar, and process is the same. We're basically reading the information into the record today and leaving it open for public comment for it to be finalized at a later date that was set.
Mr. Chair, that's correct. Yes, there are four public hearings associated with this.
Right.
Okay, so yeah, with that, just to give a little bit of background, you have some illustrations in front of you. These four subdivisions are located off of Canyon Ferry Road between Valley Drive and Lake Helena Drive. You see the colored illustration as well. The Aerosmith subdivision consists of 10 single-family lots, a fire protection and utility lot, that one's going to be the subdivision in red. The Blacksmith subdivision consists of four commercial lots and seven single-family lots, that's the subdivision in yellow. The Coppersmith subdivision includes three single-family lots and 11 duplex lots, that's the subdivision in green. And then finally, the Wordsmith subdivision includes seven single-family lots, and that's in blue. They utilize an interconnected road system, internal road system, but also an integral off-site road system, particularly properties to the north, as well as Esplin Drive, which provides access to Canyon Ferry Road. You might remember these four subdivisions were recently brought in front of you for a modification specifically to modify Condition 6B, which required that Esplin Drive, that approach, be widened to a three-lane approach. Those findings of fact, and that modification was approved in the fall of 2024. But at this point, this modification just simply addresses the change in the wastewater treatment system. In addition to this public wastewater treatment system that we're discussing today, these lots would be served by individual wells. All four of these subdivisions were granted preliminary approval on November 24, 2020, and they were also granted a three-year extension to November 24, 24 of 2026. Since that preliminary approval of those four subdivisions, the applicant hired Hydro Solutions to conduct an aquifer test to determine the hydraulic conductivity on site. So when that preliminary plat was initially reviewed, the hydraulic conductivity that was used as the basis for selecting the wastewater treatment system was taken from the Helena Valley, their USGS report, which published an estimated hydraulic conductivity of about 130 feet per day. This Hydro Solutions aquifer testing that was done measured the hydraulic conductivity on site at approximately 257 feet per day, which is significantly higher. That increase in hydraulic conductivity resulted in a more favorable non-degradation analysis, and that influenced the applicant's decision to use this cheaper and easier-to-maintain Level 2 wastewater treatment system rather than the sequencing batch reactor system, which is relatively complex and more expensive to maintain. So what I have in front of you is the overall DEQ lot layout, and what it shows is that all four subdivisions would have that eight-inch sanitary sewer main that would take effluent from individual septic tanks that are on each lot to the two recirculating tanks and recirculating sand filters in that northwest corner. In that northwest corner up there, and after treatment, would pump that to the drain field just north of the subdivisions, and you can see that in the purple. Another element of this modification request is that the DEQ has issued the COSA for all four of these subdivisions. It's approved the Level 2 public wastewater treatment system and issued the associated discharge permit for that Level 2 system. In the initially approved findings and conclusions, all four staff reports reference the use of the sequencing batch reactor under the review criteria impacts to local services as it pertains to water and wastewater. No other findings of fact will change in any of the other primary review criteria as a result of this modification. Currently, all four of these subdivisions have Condition of Approval Number 1, which states that the water and wastewater treatment systems need to be reviewed and approved by DEQ and the Lewis and Clark County Environmental Health Division. This modification will not change the need for that Condition of Approval. That said, with this proposal, individual septic tanks will be required for each individual lot, and those will need to be reviewed and permitted by Environmental Health Division. And so to that end, this modification staff does recommend including a Condition of Approval, which would incorporate in the county covenants, notice to homeowners of the need to obtain a permit for those tanks. This would be incorporated in Condition of Approval 15Z in the Aerosmith subdivision, Condition 16BB, and Condition 16VB in the Blacksmith subdivision, Condition 15Z in the Coppersmith subdivision, and Condition 14U in the Wordsmith subdivision. We sent out requests for agency comments to the Lewis and Clark County Environmental Health Division and the DEQ subdivision division for their review and comments. We received a comment back from Beth Norberg with Environmental Health, and she indicated that Environmental Health does not have any comments on the Smith subdivision project. They have obtained septic permits for the individual tanks for each lot and the main public wastewater treatment system. Final installation will be inspected in accordance with their DEQ approval. We also sent out adjacent landowner notices, published a legal notice of these public hearings in the Helena IR, and posted four signs around the property. To date, we've received no public comments regarding the proposed wastewater treatment modification. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I know that we have the applicant, Kim Smith, here, as well as Ryan Casney from Casney and Associates.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, if I could. Just, I like to simplify things if I can for folks. So in a simplistic way, the original plan had one type of wastewater system designed. Through further research and study, it was determined and actually given the nod by DEQ that they could use a more traditional system, the Level Two system with the tanks. And this actually is easy, well, it'll easier to put in, maintain, all those kinds of things over time. And looks like DEQ has given it the nod. So this process that we're under today, it's really a request for modification because the plan is written as if it were going to use the original system. So if this system is now going to be used, and the new system is going to be used, we have to modify the conditions of approval in the subdivisions essentially. So it's just a modification process. We're not rehash the entire subdivision. We're not determining whether this is a good idea or not. That ship has sailed. This is just a proposed amendment to the conditions and a different wastewater system is being proposed. And similar to our modifications this fall with the roads, that was driven a lot by MDT's preference. And now with DEQ kind of giving this the nod as well, that this seems to be the the system of of preference. So just wanted to clarify that, that we're not, this isn't a review of the entire subdivision. And I knew that, but I want just to confirm that on the record and kind of simplify what is being proposed here today. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hunt, that is correct. And while we are not reviewing the entire subdivision, we are requiring that the wastewater information that we require at preliminary plat was provided so that we know the impacts. And so that was collected and summarized in the staff reports that you have in front of you.
Yes, thank you very much. Mr. Chair, thank you.
All right. So we're going to start out with this Aerosmith subdivision, taking all the information that you just provided for us for all four of the subdivisions. And is there any any other questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair, we might offer an opportunity for the applicant or his representative to address the commission if they'd like.
Do that.
And then public comment, and then we're ready to move.
There we go.
Just a couple of general comments. Doing subdivisions is sometimes involves some moving targets, not with the county this time, but with, and so we have made a couple of changes. And I'm very appreciative of spending you guys' time and getting these approved. A couple of things I'd add that when this was originally approved, the mixing zones were to a much more stringent requirements as they have been changed now at DEQ, and they're not near as stringent. So this is our mixing zones are even above and beyond what is now required. So I think that's a good idea. It's four small subdivisions. And, you know, people think four subdivisions, wow, it's it's less lots or the same lots as probably an average subdivision. The reason for that is, as you know, water availability and land ownership. Some of these parcels were not owned by me, and I'm working with those people. One of the things that we really like about changing is the energy requirements for this versus a batch reactor system are big time lower. I mean, the energy requirements are way, way lower, and I think that's a good thing. Or conserving energy is good. The other thing they have issued us are tank permits, and they are all going to be installed in right up to the utility and access easements. And they will be maintained not by the homeowners, but by the association or the owner of the whole subdivision. And I think that's a good thing. They'll be set up on a schedule to be pumped, two or three years, whatever people feel is required. So I think that's a good thing. And they're all going to be installed where lots are sold. There's going to be no homeowner contractor that we're not familiar with installing the tanks. They're going to all be done by us, and we have a pretty good history of working with I think that pretty much summarizes what I would like to say. I'm sure you're available for questions if you have any.
No questions?
I'm free to go.
It seems to kind of make sense that it's a better system and and works better for the long run.
Thank you.
All right. Any, let's see, I guess, is there any public comment? Any other comment? Any public comment on this? No public comment? Let's move to a motion.
Okay, Mr. Chair, thank you. Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the request for modification of conditional approval of the Aerosmith subdivision and set a date for February 18 to consider a decision.
Second, is there any further discussion? I think it's pretty clear, and we're just, we're going to use the same information for all four of the subdivisions. All right. And is there any further discussion from the commission? There being none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve the request for modification of Aerosmith subdivision, as explained by Ms. Ward and Mr. Smith, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes two to zero. Now, let's move on to the next item, which is Blacksmith. Ms. Ward.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I would just say, I gave a larger presentation about the proposal as a whole. If you have any other questions about the Blacksmith subdivision, I'm happy to answer any.
And Mr. Chair, maybe right off the bat, I would move to move the record from the last discussion on Aerosmith forward to this discussion on Blacksmith.
Second, is there any public comment on that? Any public comment on using that same discussion on fraud that was that we just used to determine Aerosmith, also to use it on Blacksmith subdivision? There being no public comment, we will we will move to a vote on the motion to use that, to move that that information forward. All those in forward and in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Also say aye. Motion passes two to nothing. Now, we need to move to an actual approval of Blacksmith, is that right?
Right.
All right. Why don't we move to, why don't we take motion to that effect?
If I could just say, I just want to clarify, are we, we're not moving to approve the modification today, are we?
No.
Wait, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We're moving to, let's see, how do we say?
Mr. Chair, I would just suggest, we just moved the record forward from Aerosmith to Blacksmith. So we have that record now in this discussion. I think we can have discussion on on Blacksmith. We can offer public comment if you like. The applicant can make any further comments if he'd like. We kind of just go through the process again, but that record from Aerosmith discussion has been brought forward. So we don't have to repeat ourselves multiple times. And if the public has interest in talking about this particular subdivision, they surely can.
All right. Is there any public comment on the Blacksmith subdivision? Any public comment? There being none, let's move to a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the request for modification of the conditional approval of Blacksmith subdivision as presented.
Second.
Mr. Chair, just a comment, just before we vote, just to remind people, this is just approving the request for modification. So we're allowing them to make that request, and we're going to consider that modification on the 18th of February.
So, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hunt, if I can just clarify.
Please.
The, this modification is a little different than the modification that we did with Esplin Drive, simply because our subdivision regulations break them out into two parts. In the last modification with Esplin Drive, they opted to go through that first step, which was simply a request to you, can I put in an application to request that modification? In this instance, Mr. Smith has decided to forego that optional first step and just put in the application to you. And so I would say before approving any modification request here, that we do go through the findings in the staff report in front of you, the conclusions, and then any of those before any kind of approval of a modification.
Right. Mr. Chair, just thank you for that clarification, because that was the intent. The intent was just to, this is the discussion day, day for public comment. We'll make a decision and go over all of those findings of fact and and changes of condition on the 18th of February at our at our meeting. That will be decision day. So if I was unclear, that's exactly what I was intending in my motions and what I'm doing.
We restate the motion entirely.
Well, we can for this. I just want to make sure in our discussion here that we're we're clear.
All right.
And you agree with that intent?
Yes.
Okay, good. So I'll restate it then. So, Mr. Chair, I would move that we consider the request for modification of conditions of approval for Blacksmith subdivision and make a decision about that at a regular scheduled meeting on February 18.
Second, and I guess there was no, there was no public comment. Is there any public comment at this point? We have a motion and a second on the on the floor. Any further discussion? Then the the motion to move this forward and have a final final determination on February 18. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This motion also passes two to nothing. And we'll move to Coppersmith subdivision.
Okay, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. Again, the presentation that I provided initially covers all four of these subdivisions. If you have any specific questions about the Coppersmith subdivision, I'm happy to answer them.
So, Mr. Chair, I would I would move to bring our previous discussions on Aerosmith and Blacksmith, those records forward to the Coppersmith subdivision discussion.
Second, is there any public comment on that? Any public comment? There being none, we'll move to a move to a vote. All those in favor of moving the public comment forward from the original discussion on Aerosmith to this now on the Coppersmith subdivision. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes two to zero. Now, the next the next item would be to move this one forward as well. Is that right? We have a.
It is. Mr. Chair, after public comment, or if the applicant has anything further to say about this particular subdivision, I'm happy to make a motion.
Any, would you like to add anything, Mr. Smith? All right. Any public comment on Coppersmith? Any public comment? Now we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve consideration of the request for modification of the conditional approval of Coppersmith subdivision and schedule a decision for that on February 18 at a regular scheduled meeting.
Second, any further discussion? Any further discussion? And there's a motion to move the consideration of this, of Coppersmith, taking that, all that comment that was originated with Aerosmith and moving forward for a final decision on February 18. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes two to nothing. Now, let's move to Wordsmith.
Okay. Mr. Chair, Commissioner, again, as I presented these four subdivisions, if you have any questions specifically about the Wordsmith subdivision, I'm happy to answer them.
And, Mr. Chair, right off the bat, I'd move that we move the record forward from the previous discussion of Coppersmith, Blacksmith, Aerosmith subdivisions into the record for this Wordsmith subdivision consideration.
Second, is there any public comment before we move to a vote? Any public comment? If not, the vote, well, excuse me.
You need to come up to the microphone, ma'am.
Yeah, if you come on up to the microphone and, yeah, you need to come to the microphone and just give your name.
Janet Armstrong, and I just want to find out, in all these subdivisions, are they individual homes? Will they be apartment houses, duplexes, or, you know, how is that moving forward, I guess? First, we understood as a landowner next to this property that it would be individual homes, and then now we're hearing that it's apartment houses and duplexes, and we're wondering how this is going to affect, you know, the area as far as my husband was a volunteer fireman, the water for that area, plus for coverage for fire, and also how it will affect our property tax out in that area. You know, just trying to find out, are they individual homes that are going to be built in all four of these? Or is it a combination of both? Or does anybody have any answers on that?
What we'll do is we'll ask for any other public comment, and we'll try to answer your your questions. Okay?
Okay. I have another meeting I have to be to, and that's why I dressed at this time. I know it wasn't, you know, right where you were at on your agenda, but that's what I wanted to.
Well, thank you for coming forward and requesting the information. Thank you. All right. Is there any other public comment? Mr. Smith.
Kim Smith, 7510 Applegate Drive, Commissioners. The property tax thing is based on the improvements that are on the property. I can't speak to. I can't, uh, speak to that very much. Uh, but I would say a, a couple of things. There are 12 lots out of the total of these that are duplex lots, uh, but they're only duplex lots, or no fourplexes, nothing above two units. Um, and those are the ones on the right-hand side of what, what's that one called? Uh, Copper Smith. Yeah. A, all the rest are single-family lots, although the ones in the front are commercial lots on, uh, Canyon Ferry Drive. Um, of course, the roads and everything are going to be paved in and out of here. I, I, I don't see that it's, uh, I think it's probably an improvement and, um, I hope that, uh, answers her questions, and if she has any more, I'd be happy to answer.
All right. Yes, thank you, Mr. Smith. Did that, did that answer your question? Thank you. Thank you. All right, we'll move, we'll move to, uh, Wordsmith.
Well, Mr. Chair, we're on Wordsmith.
Yeah.
We moved the record forward.
We moved the record forward. We need to, so we now, I think we need to vo, vote on that, yeah.
Well, we have, we, oh, I'm moving the record forward. Okay, well, we can do that, I think we did, but we can do that.
All right.
No, we didn't. Okay, good.
Okay.
You're right on target then.
Well.
Mr. Chair.
Once in a while.
Good, I'm glad.
Although, all those, I, if there's no further public comment, then we're going to, we're going to move to, uh, a vote on moving the public record forward from the other three subdivision, uh, requests, um, and, and to the discussion on Wordsmith. Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Mo, oppose, same sign. Motion passes two to nothing. Now, a motion, uh, discussion on the request for modification for Wordsmith. Any further?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chair, after public comment or?
Any other public comment? Any, any public comment on, on, uh, uh, Wordsmith? Any public comment? There being no, no public comment, we'll move, uh, I guess it's, we're ready for a motion on Wordsmith.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we, uh, consider the request for modification of conditional approval of Wordsmith subdivision and set a date for the sa, uh, the 18th of February for a decision day.
Second. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of considering the request and, and for Wordsmith and, and, um, stating, uh, moving forward to January or further February 18th for the, uh, final, final discussion and appro, and potential approval. Um, all, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries two to nothing. All right. Next item on our agenda is a board appointment, uh, Wolf Creek Fire Department Service Area, Connor Fitzpatrick, please.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Connor Fitzpatrick, Lewis and Clark County Elections, the Elections Division Supervisor. I bring before you today a, uh, board appointment for the Wolf Creek Craig Fire Service Area. Uh, Jason Crocker, who is also a member of the Wolf Creek Craig Water Sewer District, so a individual very interested in being, uh, part of these, uh, special district boards, uh, has applied for a vacancy that was left by the unfortunate, uh, passing of Rodney Boboth, a longtime member of the Fire District Board. Uh, so Jason is, uh, looking to be appointed to the vacancy. This seat is up for, uh, regular election this year, so Jason would be, uh, appointed, if, uh, so voted, to the seat until May, uh, but then he has also applied for the seat, uh, for, uh, the full term starting in May as well. So, you know, we will see whether this is, uh, elected by acclamation or whether it goes to a competitive election here in the future, as candidate filing is still ongoing. Beyond that, though, Jason is a, um, registered voter of the district and is therefore qualified to serve, so we recommend that, uh, he is appointed. Here for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from the Commission?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Fitzpatrick, just for public information, it, it's kind of an odd thing that we do here, and this is one of those things where these folks were and are elected by their local citizens during an election, but if someone passes away or leaves the area or whatever it might be, leaves the board for some reason, then it is, uh, the county commission's role to appoint someone until the next election. It's just a simple, simple way to describe it. Is that correct?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hunt-Housen, yes, that is correct. I believe it was two weeks ago now, we did something very similar for the, uh, West Valley Fire Rescue District. Uh, in that case, a member had moved out of the district and therefore had to resign. Um, in the case of, uh, the, uh, Wolf Creek Craig Fire Service Area, um, yeah, we had Rodney Boboth pass away, unfortunately. Uh, so those are, uh, vacancies that are described, uh, specifically as vacancies in statute. Uh, and then for, uh, Fire Service Areas, uh, Fire Districts generally within the county, uh, it is up to the county commissioners to, uh, vote to fill that vacancy. Now, if we were in a situation where, uh, this particular seat was going to be up in, say, uh, 2026 or 2027, as every Fire District seat is a three-year term, uh, it would then go to the ballot at the next election as a, um, unexpired term, which would give the folks of the district a chance to, uh, either confirm or, uh, oppose the vote of the commissioners for filling that vacancy. Uh, in the case of this seat, though, uh, it is regularly up for election in May, so that, uh, just keeps on the regular cycle there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is, is there any public comment on this? Any public comment? We're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I admit that we appoint Jason Crocker to the Wolf Creek Craig Fire Service Area Board of Trustees until the next regular election in May of 2025.
Second. Is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
Thanks, uh, thanks to Mr. Crocker for stepping forward and, uh, for indicating an interest, uh, in the future as well, running for, for the open seat. Uh, all right. All those, uh, all those in favor appointing, uh, Jason Crocker to the Wolf Creek Craig Fire Service Area Board of Trustees, uh, say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes two to zero.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda today is, uh, revised capital asset policy. Frank Cornwell.
Morning, Mr. Chair. Uh, for the record, my name is Frank Cornwell, CFO of the county. Um, uh, what we have before you is a, uh, recommended revisions to the capital asset policy. Uh, County Finance and Accounting have reviewed and reviewed the current capital asset policy and have recommended edits. Uh, the proposed edits to the policy are necessary to align with new generally, general accounting standards board statements or GASB statements, um, on reports for leases, subscription-based information technology agreements, or SBITAs, um, and also includes changes to increase capital asset thresholds. Uh, staff recommends the board to approve these, uh, updates, and if you have any questions, uh, please come by my office if you ever want to really learn about, uh, GASB statements. Also, we have, uh, Jen Garber down in an accounting who's really knowledgeable, and Sherry Pete's in accounting. We have a lot of people that have a good, uh, base knowledge in these statements. I know they can be very complicated, but, um, we find that us in finance and accounting were the only ones that really get interested in this stuff, but it's really cool to see. Um, also, the updates have gone through our auditors as well, and they have given us a thumbs up on these changes. So if you have any questions, please come by or ask them right now.
Any questions from the Commission?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I think, uh, Mr. Cornwell essentially just said it, but on a relatively regular basis, as, as these, uh, accounting, general accounting standards are updated or changed by, or recommended changes by, um, the board, the standards board, we just make those changes within our policy and we, it's part of the process to come to the board. So this is not abnormal, this is, happens on a kind of a regular, occasional time when those standards are updated, and so this is, uh, par for the course, normal business, really. Correct?
Yep, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, yep, this is, this is normal changes that we, we make to our policy. It's, it's good practice to adopt, um, GASB statement, uh, changes and updates, and there's a lot of work that goes into it. You guys don't really, it's, this is, these standards have been out there for three, three years, and it has taken all of those three years to implement those. Uh, it's a lot of work, but it's, it's what we do to make sure that our books look like Galveston County's books or other counties. We can compare all local government, uh, finances, and you know, you can compare apples to apples and, and get a good sense of where we stand in the world. So very, very, uh, very normal to make these changes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I, just one thing for the public's information, what is GASB?
GASB is the General Accounting Standards Board. They're, they're the, the, the board that sets, um, reporting policy or practices for, for the practice of, of reporting, uh, finances. It's?
Particularly for government?
Particularly, yep, it is government-focused. Um, they, they set standards, they, they seem to reset, they set a, a lot more these days. They're up to 100 standards right now, or 100 statements, um, which each one of them is, is a significant lift to implement, but, uh, this, this is the board that sets it. This is, I think by state law, we have to follow these standards and, and it's, and it makes sense when it comes to being able to use these statements. We, we can compare our statements to another government, and this is, this is how all of them are, are reporting out.
All right. All right. Any, uh, public comment? Is there any public comment? There being none, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the revised capital asset policy 2.1.5 as, uh, presented by Mr. Cornwell.
Second. Is there, uh, any further discussion on the, on this?
Mr. Chair, uh, just to comment?
Commissioner Hunt-Housen.
If I could, um, as Mr. Cornwell mentioned, uh, you know, it's, it's a quick process for us, and it's, as I said, it's a normal process, but when these standards get changed or, um, uh, there's modifications made by the board, it is a heavy lift, and we have amazing people. So Jen and, and Sherry and all those in the accounting, finance, really appreciate the work that you do, uh, because our process here is pretty simplistic, but what happens behind the scenes is, uh, it's?
You bet.
There's a lot to it and a lot of detail, and, um, we have had, uh, been, uh, recognized for our excellence in financial reporting for years and years, 26, 27 years or something in a row. Uh, so that, that doesn't happen by accident. So thank you to all those folks that are working behind the scenes for, on our behalf.
Absolutely. I think it's, it's wonderful, and this is, if anybody in the public could, would like more information about these standards and, and how, and the changes made, if they want something, would like to dig into it a little deeper, if they would get ahold of, uh, one of us or, or, uh, Roger Baltz will introduce you to Frank, and, and he can give you just as much detail as you want. All right. All right. Any, uh, any other, any, I guess we've got a, uh, we have a motion on the floor? Yes, we do.
We do.
And, uh, motion on the floor to, uh, approve the revised capital asset policy, uh, 2.1.5 is explained by, uh, Mr. Cornwell. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes two to zero.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes.
Request a five-minute recess?
We will do that, and then, then we have some information for, about the different department heads coming back. Let's, uh, let's say we'll be back here at, uh, 10:30.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We will reconvene, and we're at, uh, item number 13 on our agenda today, which is a department head, uh, updates. And, um, we're going to ask each of, uh, department heads to come in and, and give us a little update on what's going on in their area. We'll start, uh, is someone here from the, uh, from the fairgrounds? I don't see them.
Mr. Chair, if I could, yeah, Mr. Ten, Mr. Tenney may not be able to join us today, and I could give you a quick update at, at the end of the other reports, if that would work for you, Mr. Chair.
That would be just fine. That's great. All right. Finance, uh, Frank Cornwell. Is he here? He was here, he was just in the hall, but we'll, we'll get him in a minute. Uh, Carrie DeRozier at, uh, Human Resources.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Hunt-Housen, for the record, my name is Carrie DeRozier, Human Resources Director. Um, so we've been busy with the recruitment process. Uh, right now, we have 17 positions that are open and being recruited online, taking applications for those. Um, we have nine in addition that are in the scoring, interview, or reference check phase, and we have a couple also that we're working on getting posted soon. Over the course of December, we hired eight new, uh, employees, and we had 12 terminations, including six retirements. We had, uh, three workplace investigations open. Um, I covered a longer timeframe since our last scheduled meeting, November, December, and January. Uh, we had, we're working on, um, a few of those. We also wrapped up the market survey and implementation process in December. As I noted in the presentation of my recommendations to you in January, uh, there were 15 positions that were adjusted, which affected 58 employees. A lot going on in the benefits and payroll area. Christina issued 511 W-2s for calendar year 2024. She also issued vacation overage letters. We have, um, 33 employees, uh, that had vacation overage, um, totaling about 1,823 hours that need to be used by the end of March. We also are working on the 1095 C forms that are part of the, um, Affordable Care Act. Um, we have until early March to distribute those. We're also keeping a close eye on health plan expenses. Our claims paid through this week totaled just over $6 million for this plan year. Compared to last plan year at this point, we were just over 4.9 million. This puts us ahead, um, kind of backwards use of the word ahead, but, um, last year's total by a little over $1 million. Um, however, taking into account the claims covered by our stop-loss insurance, our average, our per-week average claims for this plan year to date, uh, is $168,000 compared to last year's total, um, whole year plan average was $166,398. So we're just above, uh, by a couple thousand a week on average so far, taking into account our stop-loss reimbursements. Now, stop-loss reimbursements, we feel like that's, that's good because our plan's not covering it, but on the other hand, we're at a pretty high point this year already, which means probably not good news when we try to renew our stop-loss, um, insurance for next plan year. Continuing on health plan, um, information, we've also received almost 275,000 in medical and prescription drug rebates, and we've had, uh, over 49,000 through the month of December, uh, from the 340B, uh, drug program that we implemented in July. This too amounts to about 40% savings on those eligible specialty drugs. And wellness, we have our 2025 wellness screening session starting at the end of January, so Emily will be sending that information out very soon. We should have probably 10 to 12 sessions that will have scheduled plus availability to participate in those screenings at, uh, St. Pete's as well, if that works better for people. We also have an RFP out, uh, for the third-party administration of our health plan and those proposed. third party administration of our health plan, and those proposals are due by February 18. Training, our January HR talks was pushed to February, and the topic will be safely navigating discrimination laws. I changed the occurrence of those meetings from monthly to bimonthly. So we'll be doing six a year. I'm going to test that out this year. And I put a recap of the July through December trainings there that we did for supervisors. And then I just wanted to add a little recap of calendar year 2024, as far as our recruitment and retention. We managed 97 recruitments over the course of the calendar year. We brought on 127 new hires. Of those, 78 of those were regular staff. 49 of those were either temporary or short term, and those include probably short term and temps for the fairgrounds and the election. So a lot of action there. And we also processed 100 terminations, 89 of those being regular and seasonal status, and 11 of those being temporary or short term. That's all I have for today. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I'm just curious, here the the numbers, recruitment and termination numbers, whatever the circumstances are, pretty par for the course. I mean,
No, in updating my numbers from last year, we're up quite a bit on new hires, and we're also up quite a bit on terminations. So overall, higher turnover rate in general.
This last year than
Yeah.
years before.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, when I was looking at the numbers from last year that I reported this time, I had noted on the report that it was about half of what it was the prior year. So I think last year was probably a little bit of an outlier in this year's numbers. Since probably 2019 are a little more standardized.
Pardon me, say that again?
They're a little more in line with what they have been. Last year, I think, was lower than normal.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Looking at the at the health, health plan expense, am I right in saying that it looks like about $100,000 ahead of last year?
About a million. We're about a million over last year's claims.
But the that included some stop loss, right?
That's not counting the stop loss. So the the difference, it was a little hard to pick the year to date because of the stop loss credits between the two years. But if we average out the claims over the course of the year, basically $2,000 a week for 52 weeks. So you're right, it would be just a little over $100,000 difference.
That's our net cost. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And and if you can remind me a little bit what we changed on our stop loss this year, didn't we increase the increase the dollar limit that we get reimbursed?
We changed the aggregate deductible two two plan years ago. So this was the second year where we had the $160,000 individual deductible and the $300,000 aggregate deductible.
But this last couple of years have been pretty darn high, you know, in always what do you what do you as you're talking to other HR managers, you have a feel for what's going on? And then, you know, and other other government agencies around 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 us?
Well, we know from what allegiance has told us, what our actuary consultant has told us, what we've picked up, Frank is looking at the state's plan, that claims are high across the board, pretty much everywhere. So in looking at our situation, the claims that we've been incurring, it's not, it's not all one thing. It's not always preventable. And it's a combination of a lot of different things between the claims costs, between the types of claims that we're incurring, whether they be one time high cost claim for four year cancers, or, you know, short term cancers. It's kind of across the board.
Okay. Something we have to take into consideration as we go forward with the budget.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Baltz.
If maybe I could just add a little bit to what you've already heard from Carrie, this is kind of fresh on my mind, because we just met about it a few days ago. Over the detention center, our HR team works closely with Sheriff's Office regarding, you know, recruitment and retaining employees over there. But quite a number of vacancies still in the detention center. So just as a reminder, Commissioners, the Sheriff's Office has roughly 135 full time employee positions. Just it's fresh on my mind because we were just speaking about it. So not quite, but but close to half of those positions are associated with the detention center operation. So it's a big piece of the operation. And and like I say, just thought I'd mention that since we're talking HR.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. All right. Frank, have Frank Cornwell talk about finances?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Frank Cornwell, CFO of the county. Just would like to just remind everyone, everybody probably already knows, we're starting off our budget season. We are in full steam right now, working on workforce plans, getting our fixed rates set, getting our assumptions determined and calculated. There's there's some unknowns coming forward. We don't know what the legislature is going to do with property taxes and the impact on our revenues will be going forward. So finance will be calculating those fairly aggressively conservative, and in hopes that we won't have to make much changes or have any amendments after this session wraps up. But we're keeping a close eye on what's happening at the Capitol Hill. Hopefully, it'll be minor impact. Won't it'll be, you know, same as always, status quo, kind of, kind of, you know, no big changes. That's kind of what we're hoping. I'm not seeing anything right now that's scary ish. But you never know, you know, tomorrow's a different day. But right now, we're the finance team is just ramping up for for that. And I would also encourage all departments, if you want to have a meeting with finance, please schedule a meeting with me or Misty. Get your time in. If you have any significant changes, please, please come and discuss them with me. And we can go over anything you want, and all the analysis all day long at finance team. So, yeah, and I think, Roger, I think we're recommending at least try to get one meeting in with with me, if if even if you don't expect much changes year over year. But try to try to get a meeting in with me, and we can go through your presentations and your year over year changes.
Okay. All right. Just to just one thought is, you remember, it seems to me, it's like in May that we usually get the new appraisals for the for property appraisals that the state do. As in, if I remember, if I remember right, the appraisals are based on values at the end of this time, on the basis on the end of 2023, which was sort of the peak in valuation. So it won't reflect any of the moderation that happened over the last year, year and a half.
Mr. Chair, I would say that so just just a small correction. They come out in August, but it is the the prior year's assessments. So the the department revenue goes out every two years and does a reappraisal. The year between those two years is usually about a 2%. They just I honestly think that's what they use. They just use a 2% growth year over year. And that's what you get. So it's pretty easy to there's not much change on the even years. Sorry, the odd years. So it'd be this fiscal year, we didn't have much change from 24 to 25. We could have we big changes when it comes to the county, when it comes to the growth factor from 25 to 26, because, yeah, they were doing their reappraisal, going around and doing their calculation. We also know that the legislature is looking at possibly discounting the growth factor. There's been discussion to do a half rate growth factor across all tax taxing jurisdictions. Right now, it seems like they're going away from that and going towards more of a 75% taxing jurisdiction for residential homes and 40% for everything else. Growth factor, which would have, from my calculations, kind of a minor impact on the county, would be relatively low. It would slow our our revenue growth year over year, but only by a percentage point or two. One important piece of that is that they would give us the legislature would agree to do a full inflation up to 4% cap. So if we had a hot inflationary year where we had 5% CPI, then we would get 4%. But again, if they change that calculation, I don't think it's going to have a drastic impact on our county, because we don't experience that the exponential growth that Gallatin and Flathead and Missoula County has experienced. So we're about 1%, 2% every year, kind of on a hot year, we can have a 5% growth. But mostly, it's the inflation that ends up impacting our county. So we'll 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 wait and see what happens there. But yeah, we're going to get a reappraisal. We're in a we're going to be potentially in a change year when it comes to our appraisal values this year.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could, just real quick, you know, all of our directors, you're going to hear, they're all involved in a lot of great projects for us. And I get to meet with them on a regular basis. But just listening to Frank, I was just reminded of one other thing I thought I would mention. So Frank and his team are also working on a significant project for the organization called an update to what's called the ERP, Enterprise Resource Platform. It's the financial system for the county. It's called Central Square. But there's a lot of good work going on, going on from the whole team regarding that project, and has to do with an upgrade of our software system that we use for the financial operations for the whole organization. So it's a big project that you're right in the midst of right now, too. And again, we were just talking about it the other day. So it was fresh on my mind. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone here from Extension? Didn't see anybody. Okay. Criminal Justice Services, Kelly McBride. Yeah.
Good morning, Chair Commissioner Kelly McBride, Director of your Department of Criminal Justice Services. We have, well, we've started our budgeting process. We have met with Frank and Misty, and we'll continue doing that as we as we delve in, really looking at programmatic needs specific to the jail population is our focus right now. AmeriCorps Vista, we continue, we're scheduling interviews with candidates for the AmeriCorps Vista positions. There are two. One of them is to design a an arrest diversion program. So if we can divert people from being arrested in the first place, then they won't be in the detention center. And the other is an early childhood intervention program. So those are the two AmeriCorps Vistas that we're working towards. Our data initiative is going quite well. We brought on Mohanish Pradeep in, I believe, October. And Mohanish has implemented dashboards on our webpage. I encourage you to go there. If you go to the pretrial page, you'll find the pretrial data. And there's I'm going to jump ahead because there's some exciting data there. So Mohanish has has put in our data going back to 2021. He will be, he's going back, working his way backwards. So within the next couple of weeks, it should go back to the beginning of our our pretrial program, which was May of 2018. So we'll be able to show all of our data. But I did want to share, in 2024, there's two things with pretrial that we are really measuring. Are folks making it to court? And is a community safe? Are they staying arrest free while they're on pretrial? Most people who are on pretrial, the average length is a little bit longer than nine months between that time they're arrested and the time of adjudication. So I will proudly say that in 2024, 98.07 individuals assigned to pretrial services in Lewis and Clark County made it to all their court appointments. If you look at the state's number, so there's other counties that are providing pretrial services, and the State Office of Court Administrator tracks everybody. Our partners across the state, so I just said, our number is 98%. The average for our other, the other counties is 75%. So I just kudos to to us and our pretrial services program for being law abiding. Lewis and Clark County in 2024, 94% of our our folks were not arrested on a new charge while they were pretrial. If you look at state, our state partners, their average was 67%. So again, we're 94%, they're 67%. And I just, again, it just speaks volumes to the collaborative work that has gone into designing our pretrial program and the work that we're doing there. Also, we have a pretrial officer who's graduating from the Law Enforcement Academy this Friday, and I'll send out that information so everybody can get it on their calendar. Keaton Welch has been at the Montana Law Enforcement Academy. Our officers are required to be post certified, and that's statewide. Montana Code annotated requires that they be post certified as misdemeanor, probation, and pretrial officers. So Keaton will be that on Friday. Lots else going on. Communications, where we've been working with our consultant vendor, who has updated our font and our colors and our logo. So pretty exciting. We're also working on some press releases, some stories, making sure we're getting our our information out to the community. Our first focus is on pretrial services. Again, that was our first program, definitely not our only program. But we want to make sure we're getting that message out to the community. Criminal Justice Coordinating Council continues to meet. They're probably the most active, not probably, they are the most active I have ever seen them. They have formed a jail population task force that meets weekly and is really honing in on some of the issues with the jail overcrowding. It's never just one thing. It's a myriad of things. So addressing those. And they're not just talking, but they're coming up with measurable goals and plans. So pretty exciting stuff there. Citizens Advisory Committee is looking at that early childhood piece. They had Head Start come and present to them at their last other January meeting. So really kind of really focusing there. The rest of our stuff has gone well. We've our behavioral health team is really doing an amazing job in the detention center. The number of people that they're seeing, the number of interventions that they provide. They're also meeting with Judge Piskulich. They meet with Judge Peterson to make sure that the judges are comfortable with the assessments that they're providing if asked. So and the transition planning that they're doing for individuals. So providing that transition planning helps the individual move to the next place, whether it's into treatment or back it out into the community. I have you have my report, and it's four pages long, and I won't read it to you. But I think those are some of the highlights of the great work that we're doing. Questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, just a comment, maybe.
You bet.
For the public good, I guess. I represent the Commission on the Jail Population Reduction Task Force, if that's the right title.
I'll work with
Pretty close.
Uh huh.
Okay. And I just want to say how impressed I am by the attendance and who's in attendance. I mean, judges, county attorney, Department of Corrections, probation and parole, the Public Defender's Office. Public Defender's Office, and yourself and your team. And it, it's impressive because it really takes all of those folks, and where in some communities, those folks are standing back and pointing at each other, saying, you're the problem, you're why the system's slow, you're why we have too many people in jail. You're, and this group is coming together and saying, how can we work together to, to try and reduce the population in our detention center? Are we, how are we, what, what are we doing? And can some of the practices be changed? I was really impressed by the judges even saying, you know, or being willing to look at their own practices and how they maybe apply bail or processes for how long it takes to have a hearing or something like that. And then Corrections really jumping in and saying, wow, how can we maybe get our people out of the detention center more quickly, or of some of them that may not need to be there? So just, it, it's, it's really positive from my perspective, people coming together and working together. And the solutions are not easy, it's not going to happen fast, probably, but I'm just happy with the, the conversation, I guess, and the connection.
I'm, I'm glad to hear that. That's, I'm glad to hear that's your experience, that's my experience also, going to those meetings. And, and I, I will, I forgot to mention, one of the things you all came together and, and made happen is we now have meaningful first appearances in justice courts. So those appearances, those courts started in municipal court in November, and we watched to see how that worked, and what a meaningful, you know, Commissioner, and I believe you do also, Chair, but, so everyone knows a meaningful first appearance means you have a public defender there at that first hearing. And you have also the prosecuting attorney at that first hearing, but the individual who has been charged has representation in front of the judge. And we know nationally that when you have a meaningful first appearance, that does have an effect on the individual being assigned to pretrial services, so they're not in the detention center waiting the nine or more months before their, before their trial. Because of the Jail Population Task Force, I, our, one of our justices of the peace said, you know what, we're going to do it, too. And so now our, our justice courts are doing, are providing meaningful first appearances as of January third. So pretty exciting stuff happening. And to your point, it's because everyone came to the table, continues to come to the table, and continues to talk, and sometimes it's uncomfortable. But it's, it's, it's been a really good experience.
Thank you.
Thank you for participating.
Thank you. Very good.
That's it? Okay.
Thank you. Planning. Is Greg here? Greg, there we go.
Good morning, Commissioners. Greg McNally with the Community Development Planning Department. You have a memo before you on the activities of the Community Development Planning Department, and I just want to highlight a few of those things for you, and I'll take your questions as well. Regarding land use, you know, county has initiated, county-initiated zoning, part-two zoning, or what we call it, for a couple of years now. And in that process, now we've issued eight approved conditional use permits. We currently have five that we're working on with different applicants. This is for development that isn't, wouldn't otherwise be permitted in the zoning districts, but would be permitted through the use of a conditional use permit, which is issued through our Board of Adjustment through a public process. Our Board of Adjustment meets the first Wednesday of every month, so we have one meeting, another meeting tomorrow, in which they'll be considering one of these CUPs tomorrow at five o'clock. That Board of Adjustment makes the final decision on, on these CUPs. So they, they take, they hold the public hearing and then take action on those CUPs. They also make decisions on variance requests, but we haven't had one for them yet. And they also make decisions on appeals from the zoning administrator from our office, and they haven't done that yet either. We continue to monitor the implementation of, of part-two zoning in our county and are looking to probably bring some adjustments to that to, to you in the near future. But in the meantime, we've got a lot of other long-range planning efforts that are keeping our office busy. So a couple of those to highlight here for you. The City-County Infrastructure Study Project, which is a project we're working on with the city of Alana. We just did a public meeting with Great West Engineering helped host that public meeting held in this room, as well as across the hall just the other day, getting some feedback from the public and sharing information with the public. We're a growth policy update, we're also working with a consultant on that. We've had a couple of drafts, iterations of that growth policy document that staff has commented on. We've shared comments with that consultant, and they're hoping to get us an updated draft of that document soon. So that project is actually moving forward quite well and on schedule. Our subdivision regulations update is another project we're working on. We are currently reviewing and sharing edits with the consultant on that, doing a lot of back and forth with the consultant and communication about amendments to those regulations. You've seen before you recently the planning effort that took place for the North Star Park, that's an eighteen-acre park in the northern portion of our county, where we've developed with a consultant a pretty significant plan for that park. And now we're seeking grant funding and opportunities to do certain portions of the improvements to that park, phase one being one of them, which is a trail that would circle that park, which I think would get quite a bit of use from the residents in that area. Commissioners, we are also working on an update to our fee schedule for both some of the fees we charge here in the Planning Department, as well as Public Works, some of the fees they charge. We are looking to schedule some meetings with our partners in the building industry, as well as the Alana Realtors, to talk about some of those updates so they're aware before we come forward with them for you. Subdivision activity continues. It's slowed down a little bit, but we still have some subdivision activity going on. We do have a preliminary approval that's under review right now. We've got the four modifications you just currently considered today, as well as two final plot applications that we're looking to complete here in the near future. That's for a two-lot subdivision, as well as a twenty-plus-lot subdivision in our valley. Also, in regard to land use planning, this, you know, with the legislature in town, we are sort of monitoring the activities of the legislature, making sure we're aware of how that might affect our activities going forward. In regard to floodplain administration, which we manage floodplain in, in our department, there are several permits that we're, we're working through the process on throughout the valley, and some violations we're also working on to clean up scenarios where we've had some discrepancy against the floodplain regulations. In addition, and maybe Drenda might talk about this as well, Ms. Neiman, she might mention that we are working on a flood tabletop exercise coming up here with the Health Department, scheduled for February twelfth. And Mr. Kyle Sturgis Simon might speak about the all-hazards DES tabletop exercise we'll do with flooding scenario up in the York area coming up in March of this year. Our Historic Preservation Division is busy. We've been organizing some items and scanning documents, making sure we have electronic versions of things as we have time available. The Unionville School Project has kept us busy. You might recall, we've done, used ARPA dollars to complete a lot of renovations up there. We continue to work with the active volunteers in that area as they look to complete additional improvements with some of the donated funds they've received. This would include, for now, some insulation work in the ceiling of that building, as well as refinishing the floor of that particular building. We are also, Pam Machado, our Historic Preservation Officer, is also consulting with St. Peter's Hospital as they work to do some additional changes in the historic armory building on the corner of Euclid and Last Chance Gulch there. In addition, we are doing some, Paul Putz is a contractor we were working with who's been doing some historic site district forms. So he prepares all these forms that describe how a property contributes to the historical nature of our county. He prepares those forms, submits those forms for approval, and we contract services with him year to year to continue to make a dent in those designations. Just a few highlights out of our, our staff report, or out of this memo here for you, Commissioners. One thing that some of the other department heads might speak to, and I'll just allude to just a little bit, we had our initial meeting the other day with DEQ regarding our designation as an MS four county. This would be our four municipal stormwater management. We met with DEQ, as well as with Frank Cornwell, with Jenny Chambers, Drenda Neiman, just start to talk about that process and what that will look like going forward for, particularly for our budget and our organization for the Department of how we would manage MS four going forward. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Just really fast, Greg, for the public that might be watching today and have interest, guestimated timelines for, if everything goes right, for our, our growth policy subregs and the infrastructure study?
So I'll hit the infrastructure study first. There'll be a couple of additional public meetings with all of that. So that's sort of ongoing, those timelines are more or less developing. Same with the, the growth policy, we're getting pretty close to this, but these will include processes that will bring forward to our planning board for their consideration, public hearing, as well as then after that, after they make a recommendation that comes forward to you for a, a consideration of the adoption of that growth policy. We're anticipating that stuff to occur spring, summer, that's kind of how that's playing out here.
In twenty-five?
In twenty-twenty-five, yes. Subdivision regulations have been a little slower going forward, but we hope to have a, a draft ready to go here in the very near future, again, in early twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. All right. Good. I think that's great. Thank you. Emergency management.
Something for our screens?
Yes, I do have just a few small slides for public awareness on some things. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. My name is Kyle Sturgis Simon, Emergency Manager for Lewis and Clark County. Just real quick, you know, some of the things that we've been up to in the last year, we've been able to help other jurisdictions four times. As you know, last, early spring, late winter, we went out and assisted Maui with their fire recovery from the Lahaina Fire on behalf of State of Hawaii. We're also able to assist Missoula County with the fire that they had over the summer, another fire over in Idaho on a request of the Forest Service, and then a search and rescue mission in Cascade County later this last year. We've been reimbursed for all of our expenses for all of those, except for the Cascade County, it was a short deployment, neighbor helping neighbor situation. And we've been, they're very thankful that people reach out to us for help, and it's also helped us in our program, in that we're constantly moving towards getting better qualifications and certifications, and we need to be on incidents in order to prove that we're up to snuff in a couple of things. So we've been busy doing that. We have a current grant for one hundred thousand dollars from the DNRC for five new radio repeaters in the county, this is going to be for the fire service. There were four older aging repeaters that were being maintained, collaboration with the Rural Fire Council and the Sheriff's Office. We were able to get this grant to replace those, then bring those repeaters into the county fold, incorporate them with the rest of the maintenance program, all the rest of the repeaters that we use regularly. And the other neat part about that is that's, five new radio repeaters, we're replacing four old ones, and we're adding a radio repeater in an area that traditionally has had poor coverage out at Cannon Ferry. So search, rescue, and fire will have a little bit better coverage for their response out there. Our multi-hazard mitigation plan has been a long process. Those plans are good for five years at a time. Ours is currently expired, but we're working on having that reapproved. It's actually going to go to state approval here, I think, this week. So I'll be back in front of you as a commission here very soon to adopt that plan. And that plan basically is the long-term vision for how we're going to mitigate against future natural disasters within the county, and also makes us eligible for certain federal mitigation grants. So quickly, on here, I just have a few slides, and this is for the Commission, but also for your audience as well. So we believe very strongly in public participation, and so I just want to put these up so that if anybody's watching and sees something they're interested in, they can participate. A well-prepared community not only responds more effectively during disasters, but it recovers better as well. So everything we do is open, and people just need to reach out if they're interested in participating. We have two offerings of the Incident Command System training coming up next week, and then two weeks after that. We're hosting that within the county here, but we're actually doing it out at Fort Harrison with our partners at State Department of Emergency Services. And the two offerings is going to be mostly first responders and then adjacent positions. This is for helping folks that are going to be in a situation where an incident is going to expand. Think of this last summer with the Horse Gulch Fire. The fire community is very used to responding to fires and having them out once they're past that first operational period, where they're going to be working on it for a little bit longer, thinking about ordering resources, where they're going to stage, where they're going to feed people. The, the management of the incident itself is what we'll be covering for that. Our contact information is on the website, so if anyone would be interested in signing up. With those two offerings, we're going to be putting about forty students through this class here by the end of the month, which is pretty exciting for the area. We'll also be doing future opportunities for that. A lot of emergency management and disaster, first responder response out here is volunteer-based, and so we're trying to be very cognizant of the fact that a nine-to-five training is difficult for volunteers. And so if anyone has a need for training, they're welcome to reach out to us, let us know what would work best for them, and we're doing our best to accommodate. Hence the two offerings for this training. As Greg mentioned, we have an exercise coming up. So this is what we call a tabletop exercise. We don't get up and run around or use radios, but nonetheless, we have a scenario where we present an issue to the folks that are going to need to respond and recover, and we walk through our own operational procedures and then the needs, and we've kind of sort out any little hiccups that might come up, and just overall get better at who we need to talk to and how we need to address various different things that come up. So Poor York is going to have the scenario thrust upon them. As you know, last summer, they had a fire in the area. We've been doing quite a bit of public outreach, along with Greg's group and floodplain, in terms of flood after fire. And so we want to get a little bit ahead of the curve and make sure that our partners are aware of the impacts that flood after fire can have. And then also with Missoula's issue in the last summer, with debris removal and debris management after their windstorm, we're going to be talking about that a little bit as So for our public watching, I just wanted to make sure that people knew that there were opportunities to participate in what we do day in, day out. Our Local Emergency Planning Committee is primarily oriented towards hazardous materials planning and response, but it's also all hazards and is completely open to the public. The Chair of that committee is actually a retired law enforcement, used to work with St. Pete's, but is participating solely as a community member, which I think is just fantastic, because that's, that's really what we need, is we need people who are interested in being available and ready during a disaster to be involved in the planning process upfront. That meets every third Tuesday, three PM, at the Rocky Mountain Emergency Services Center. That's the Dispatch Center building out past the airport at the end of the road. If you think you've gone too far, but you haven't gotten there, If you think you've gone too far, but you haven't gotten there, you haven't gone far enough. We do briefs and presentations. First responders comes out, a lot of infrastructure managers, so if you're thinking about pipelines or manufacturing facilities, anyone that might have a hazmat impact to the community, we bring them into this meeting so that everybody knows who everyone is well before anything could happen. That committee also provides a lot of guidance to our program, so we look to them for input on the threat and hazard identification risk assessment that we do every year, things along those lines. So it's not just us making up the answers for what we think is best. We get the community input through them. Next is another regular meeting. This is COAD, Community Organizations Active During Disasters. That meets every fourth Tuesday, 11:00 a.m. at the United Way. This one's another great one for anyone that's looking to be made available during a disaster or wants to know how to help. Join a volunteer-type group. There's faith-based groups, there's Scouts of America. It's a real, I don't want to say hodgepodge, but it is a little bit of everyone who wants to be involved to help during an emergency and meet regularly. We'll go through little disaster scenarios to see which groups are able to help out the most and what way, make sure that the line of communication is open, and just for the most part, you don't want to meet the people that are helping you during a disaster on the actual disaster. It's better to do ahead of time, and so this is how we do that. So that's all I have. I'm open to questions, and I'm leaving our contact information there up on the screen. If anybody watching is interested in participating, we always welcome people reaching out to us.
Are these opportunities I didn't catch, are they going to be on your website as well?
So the local emergency planning committee is on the website because we facilitate those, so the meeting minutes and agendas are up. COAD is outside of the county jurisdiction, I suppose, they're their own organization, but anybody can reach out to us and we can get them in touch.
Okay. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Grants and purchasing.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hunt-Housen. I'll try to be brief. I do have a sick kiddo at home, so I'm going to have to take off after this presentation today. On our procurement front for the last quarter, we've done a number of solicitations, formal RFPs or IFBs, I think we did nearly 20 since the end of September. We've also moved through over 20 contract cover sheets and review. Casey's been working diligently with our legal team, thank you, on updating our contract and solicitation documents. All of those updated documents are on our Intranet site, and we encourage staff and department heads to be sure that they're going to that Intranet site to make sure they're getting the most recent ones. We did have some updates to our trade, secret, and confidentiality pieces, as well as just some clarification on when a formal bid, for instance, gets opened, and then what that period is following that for certain actions to be taken. Casey's also worked diligently with finance and departments to get the county fully moved under an umbrella with Amazon Marketplace. This is Amazon Business, as well as Staples Business Advantage. This integration has allowed us to make sure we're getting the best prices on those marketplaces, and we can also follow what we're purchasing through much more defined analytics. So I appreciate every department's cooperation as we've gone through that process as well. With the American Rescue Plan Act funding, we are fully obligated. We've expended just over $10.5 million, so that's about 78% of our full direct allocation. We submitted our final, or excuse me, our report for the quarter ending December last week, and 54 projects fully obligated, so that was an exciting milestone. I do want to note Carrie Luke-Gahus will be unfortunately leaving us at the end of this month. Carrie's been with us since November of '21, been hugely instrumental in the success of this $10.5 million that's been expended so far, so just want to give her a public thank you. We'll make sure that we get an opportunity for you guys to let her know that as well, but in working with finance as well as the CAO, next steps for replacing that position. On the grants side, working towards closeout on our CDPG Economic Development Grant, this is the grant that supported Florence Crittinen in the expansion and renovation of their north wing. These economic development grants have a job creation or job retention component, so happy to say that they've had 11 new jobs and four retained jobs as a result of this grant. We're looking at final closeout here in February on that. We will be hosting our annual joint community needs assessment meeting with the City of Helena and City of East Helena on Tuesday, February 25th, 6:00 p.m. here in Room 326. This is a public meeting. We invite nonprofit organizations, other community organizations to come, tell us what their current needs are. This serves as the official first public hearing for many of our HUD programs, CDPG or Home Grants, but it's also just an opportunity for our community organizations to let us know what their current needs are. And that's all I have. Any questions?
I know Carrie's done a great job, and we're going to miss her, but your department has done such a good job of following up with all those time deadlines that we had with some of the federal grants. I really appreciate how efficient, in fact, have you been. Thank you for keeping us on track.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I don't have anything big, but thank you, and really do follow up, make sure that we have a chance to thank Carrie beyond this, but thank you, Carrie, out there somewhere.
Yes, I'll make sure that happens.
She watches sometimes.
She does, yes.
She's probably not on still today, but yeah, that'd be great to thank her.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Information Technology Systems, James Thomas.
Chairman Rolfe, Commissioner Hunt-Housen, good morning. James Thomas, Information Technology and Services Director for the city and the county. I'll stay short today or give you at least the highlights. Our staffing levels across the end of '24 into '25, we are finally up to our 13 funded positions. We had two retirements, and one of our help desk personnel moved back to Canada. So our three new team members are Billy Watts, Dylan Newmeyer, and Chris Jones, so they've jumped right in for us. Some of the project updates, our internal project is our network modernization project. We started with our wide area network. That was kind of last summer. Those are all the microwave radios that sit on top of buildings, and we've got a few on towers, keep all the buildings connected. We've basically completed that work, so we have upgraded all of the connectivity for the buildings at least to 1 gigabit, so we've got good connectivity for all the buildings. We are into Phase 2, which is inside the buildings, fortunately now because it's cold outside, but we are working to replace all the network gear that's inside the building. So every piece of network connectivity inside the buildings will be replaced, renewed here very shortly. The city-county building, this building, we've gone all the way through to the attic, and we have one network switch that will remain until the end of the project, and then it will be replaced. But basically, all of this building is complete with the network switches. The Law and Justice Center just down the hill and the pillar building or the 406 building, we are roughly 50% to 75% through that building. We've got all the new gear mounted, connected, and we've transitioned a fair number of people, users, staff, over to the new equipment. We are working on a few printers, and then we're going to coordinate with the municipal court to make sure we don't interrupt any of their court proceedings and court dates. We've also been working out at the 911 dispatch center, and we have installed all of the new gear out there and are working to get the new gear connected side by side with the old gear. So we want to make sure, again, just as municipal court, we don't interrupt them, we don't want to interrupt 911 operations. And so they'll be fully functional on both networks until we're fully done with the old network, and then basically we'll just be able to turn it off. We've also started installing new equipment at the courthouse and in the jail, and so these will be our major buildings. Once we're through these, a significant number of the staff have all been transitioned over to the new network. Then we'll start reaching out to the smaller locations that are pretty much one building, smaller number of people. There are a couple that do pose us a little bit of problems. The County Public Works site is, we call it an aggregate network. Multiple networks connect through the tower that runs at County Public Works, so we're going to coordinate with them very closely when we do that upgrade. Coming soon will be the Phase 3 upgrade, which I think a lot of people will appreciate, and that is the wireless upgrade that will be inside each building. We put wireless in this room, but our goal is to basically synchronize all the wireless across the organization. So basically, if you do use a mobile device like a laptop or a tablet, you'd be able to pretty much walk from building to building without ever losing connectivity, except when you're outside the buildings. We expect we're going to be finished with Phase 2 here at the end of spring, and we will start working on Phase 3 or the wireless here during the summer and hopefully done by the fall. Closing out, our cyber security awareness training, we finished our first quarter in the new product suite from No Before. The training seems to have been well received by staff. Folks seem to like the more abbreviated training, so we'll have a new campaign rolling out here very shortly. We ran the campaign for 30 days, but we did allow staff another 30 days to complete that training. Excuse me. And then as we kind of looked at our incompletes, what we did do is we filtered out the incompletes that are actually not here. They're seasonal staff, short-term workers that come in during elections, things like that. Once we filtered those out, we did reach a 95% completion rate, so we're very pleased with that kind of a completion rate. We provided a couple of the departments with their staff completions so that they send them on to other organizations to show that we have taken the cyber security training and that their staff have completed it. We think the benefits of the new training program are pretty significant. The IT staff, we have a working group from the IT Steering Committee that helps us pick the training, and once we roll that training campaign out, the IT department kind of just sits back and lets it run. We don't have to follow up with users, we don't follow up with supervisors. It's more automated than we've ever had before. So definitely looking forward to the next training campaign, see how it goes. So that's my report, Commissioners. Feel free to ask any questions.
Any questions?
Chair, I'm just going to let them know, I have my certificate on my desk in case you come by and have Jack Koo's passed and who asked, so ready to go.
Good thing, you'll have multiple of them for the year.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I could just very briefly, just we have a joint meeting with the City of Helena later today, beginning at 4 o'clock, and they did ask for an item to be on there that concerns IT. You know, we have a joint IT board for operating the department jointly, and it's about a reappointment of an existing member. Did I get that right, James?
Yes.
Thank you. Just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, James. Health Department, Health Officer Drenda Neiman.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hunt-Housen. My name is Drenda Neiman, the Director of Lewis and Clark Public Health. This is the time of year that we often reflect on how last year went in preparation for this upcoming year, and so I'd like to give you just a brief summary of some of those highlights as we did that reflection. Our public health nurses continue to provide services to our community, especially those who experience barriers to care. They provide free immunizations to those who are uninsured or underinsured, provide testing for HIV, syphilis, Hep C, and offer free rapid syphilis testing to pregnant participants in our WIC program. From January to November of last year, we administered 2,141 total vaccines. 272 were travel-related, and 883 were for respiratory illness like flu, COVID, and RSV. The Child and Family Health Team received a grant to begin universally offered home visiting services to every person that has given birth in a five-county area. Our home visitors work cooperatively with St. Peter's Health to meet with parents just after giving birth. This program supports breastfeeding, perineal mental health, child development milestones, and connecting families to other resources in the community. Meanwhile, our WIC program is working to increase participation numbers. We average 760 participants, which is down compared to prior years. So we've done some things like starting satellite offices in Broadwater and Marke Counties to help reach additional families. Home Visiting and WIC have worked closely with immunizations and the Lead Education and Assistance Program to offer one-stop-shop services at events in the community so that families can get immunizations, sign up for WIC and home visiting, have their child's blood lead level checked, properly install car seats, and receive hearing screenings and asthma education. Our Licensed Establishment Team inspected over 90% of our 690 licensed establishments, including food establishments, pools and spas, trailer courts, campgrounds, and public accommodations. The team received a grant from the Retail Food Flexible Funding Program. This helped the team to complete one of the nine national retail food program standards, Standard 5, which focuses on foodborne illness and food defense preparedness and response. The statewide public health community is advocating for a bill during the legislative session to update fees that haven't been increased since 2009. Our Prevention Team renewed grants for our work on the Local Outreach to Suicide Survivors or Lost Team, Safer Communities Montana, which is focused on lethal means awareness and storage, Substance Misuse, opioid misuse prevention, and Behavioral Health Crisis Systems Work. We had a successful Tough Enough to Wear Pink screening event for women to receive no-cost mammograms. Also, we connected with Pell Charter School, and will be supporting high school students teaching their peers about the health hazards of vaping and how to avoid use. The Water Quality Protection District, Grizzly Gulch Placer Mine Project is starting to gain some momentum. Planning for the project started back in 2018. They are now in the construction phase of the project with bids submitted and opened back in December. Construction will start in early this year and be completed by spring. The project aims to address the negative impacts created through an extensive history of placer mining. The project will create a new stream canal, floodplain, wetland stabilization, steep slopes, and provide substantial vegetation. Water Quality Protection District will also be participating in the new MS4 Stormwater Management Plan as we are collaborating with our other county partners on that. The Environmental Health Team received a grant to inventory all septic systems in the county, which will kick off this year. In addition, they attended a woodsmoke seminar to better understand how the changing climate is affecting our response to wildfires. They are improving the lead poisoning prevention program with funding from the State Department of Public Health and continue to offer a capillary blood lead testing for residents in East Helena. Our partnership with the EPA will help prepare for yard cleanups in response to a lowered federal cleanup standard of lead in the soil in East Helena. We will be participating in the Flood Tabletop as part of our Public Health Emergency Preparedness Work in collaboration with not only several other departments in the county but community partners as well to look at our preparedness, response, and recovery to flood, and this is a great time of the year to do that, prior to flooding in the spring. And then finally, the 2024 Community Health Assessment was just published in December, and that was done in partnership with the Healthy Together Steering Committee, made up of representatives from St. Peter's Health, Pure View Health Center, United Way, Rocky Mountain Development Council, Lewis and Clark Public Health, Helena Indian Alliance, and Shodair Hospital. We are now moving into the Community Health Improvement Planning Phase, and will be facilitating sessions to develop goals, objectives, and activities to address concerns related to housing, chronic disease, and behavioral health. These priorities were selected based on the health assessment, and this is the same priorities from three years ago when we did the same process. So details on those sessions for the community to participate can be found on our social on our social media as well as our website. We will have a session for housing, one for chronic disease, one for behavioral health, and then we'll do a culminating, um, session in March to finalize the plan. Thank you, Commissioners, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Uh, Mr. Chair, just a comment question. I should mention this at the outset, but, um, bills that we're tracking, if you could make sure people send those along, keep us informed, if there's ways we can help and all of that. So I don't know the bill number for the increase for fees is, I don't know if you know that one or if you can get it for us and.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Hunt-Housen, it's in draft right now, so there has not yet been a bill number assigned. Once we do, I will absolutely make sure that Commissioners have that information.
Great.
We're hoping that you're having, that you'll have a voice in the advocacy of that.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I should, I should just take a minute to mention too that several, a couple of you brought, uh, copies of your report. Uh, here, for the rest of you, you'll get them into Nadine's, she'll get them out to us, uh, so we'll have our, have your, uh, quarterly report. Public Works, Jenny Chambers.
Um, good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hunt-Housen. For the record, my name is Jenny Chambers, Lewis Clark County Public Works Director. As you guys may have heard or know, Punxsutawney Phil did see his shadow on Sunday morning. He is predicting six more weeks of winter. Phil might not have a very good track record, but looking outside today, I would say that little groundhog may have it right this time. With that, Public Works has and will continue to prioritize our winter safety activities. The County Road Crew is very busy snow plowing and hauling and stockpiling sand used throughout the county. To date, we have stockpiled approximately 36,000 tons of sand-salt mix and have used about 22,000 tons, uh, this year so far. We also have 18 contractors onboard to plow and sand rural improvement districts throughout the county, um, based upon set trigger values of snow within those subdivisions. Our staff are always available to answer questions with homeowners if they have concerns or questions about what their trigger value is for their their subdivision area. The building staff are also up very early, uh, when it snows to get the, to get out there, to get the sidewalks and entryways shoveled before most of the staff arrive in those buildings each morning. Yesterday, um, Mac, our building supervisor, indicated they were, they were cleaned by 7:00 AM. So they get up pretty early to make sure those are safe for for folks to get into those, those buildings that we maintain. Also, the this year, the courthouse installed their new snowmats, um, at keynote locations, uh, several of those around the detention center and courthouse area, and we received some very positive comments and feedback from not only staff that work in those buildings, but also visitors, um, that go into the courthouse. Another focus area this winter for us is planning and procurement activities for the upcoming construction and spring/summer season. Right now, we have, uh, about three vacant positions within Public Works that are key positions with some of those activities. We're actively recruiting for those positions, but it has added a workload strain to the department for the rest of the team to get those procurement and solicitations efforts complete. Between now and April, we have roughly eight invitations for bids, three is requests for qualifications, and five limited solicitations to complete. Some of those procurement efforts that we're gearing up for include, but not limited to, maintenance of Highway 435 chip, fog, seal, and paint. So this is a maintenance improvement program for the Highway 4035, a bridge replacement for Head Lane Bridge, a new makeup air unit for the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system at the Murray Building, and also a new generator at the Murray Building. In addition, this winter, we have completed several construction projects, including new roofs at the Murray Building and Commissioner's Garage, and a pneumatic, pneumatic control upgrade at the courthouse for their heating and ventilation system. In addition, there are some major construction projects currently underway. Uh, one of those is the D2 Arrowhead Project, uh, which we have installed. There's been three of the five crossings that are fully installed and the rest should be completed by March. It requires construction oversight and coordination with those contractors on those activities. In addition, we're finalizing the contract and timing of the notice proceed with the contractor for the magnesium chloride and fuel other than project that should begin this spring with the, with the goal to get that project completed by June when we have to get a new mag supply in. We wanted to put the new magnesium chloride that we get in our new tanks versus our old tanks that we'd wanted to commission. Planning and engineering design work continues for Henderson-Custer Future Roundabout, the Lake Helena Drive Improvement Project between Deale Lane and Lingle Road, and options for the Birdtail Road Bridge over Flat Creek, uh, we're continuing with those efforts. Um, I did provide my report to Nadine for the, for the January monthly report. Um, it has other updates and highlights for other Public Works programs, including the Lewis and Clark County Solid Waste and the Landfill with their phase two, uh, partial closure that they're working on on that cell, as well as coordination efforts with the Noxious Weed Board and the Mosquito District Boards and other highlights as well. So happy to answer any questions when you get that report and and happy to answer any questions today, Commissioner.
All right. Commissioner, any questions?
I don't think so.
All right. Thank you, and thank you for the very, the, uh, completeness and detail in your reports. I really appreciate that.
You're welcome.
All right. Roger Balt, our Chief Administrative Officer, if you'll help us wrap up here.
Sure, thanks, Commissioners. Uh, so great reports. I really appreciate our leadership and, uh, the, the hard work and all the projects that are moving forward. So, um, hope, I hope, you know, I'm, I'm sure the reports reflected that to you all as well. Maybe I would just add, as we mentioned earlier, uh, Mr. Tenney's not with us today. Commissioners, uh, one of the big projects out at the fairgrounds that we are paying close attention to is the, uh, use of our ARPA funds for the paving, uh, of different areas around the fairgrounds property. A lot of that has already occurred, uh, and a lot more is intended for the coming warmer months that'll be ahead of us to to wrap up that project. So, uh, that's one of the big projects out at the fairgrounds. I thought, Commissioners, that I might mention two or three things to you, and I, I meet with you regularly, so I, you know, you, you're aware of this, and I've also updated my written report to you that has a lot of the, uh, priority focus areas that we're working on. Our budget cycle pretty much never ends for our organization, but the intensity level will increase over the next several months as we start identifying fixed costs. The budget message will, uh, be going out. Uh, in fact, that's imminent to send that out, and we'll be talking with you, Commissioners, about a possible COLA, as we do every year, as a part of the, uh, uh, budget discussions that we have. I also thought, Commissioners, that I would just mention to you, um, so we have a working group that's been working on our record storage and archives initiative or concepts, and Commissioner Hunt-Housen is, is the Commissioner who attends those meetings. But I wanted to let you know that that group is really focusing right now on the nine-acre parcel of property that the county owns next to the fairgrounds off of Custer Avenue, where, uh, the state of Montana has their surplus operations right now. So, um, there's a lot of conversation and research that we're doing about the storage that's occurring on that site right now and also the possibility for, um, um, re- reallocating or or changing the use of that property in the coming years for possibly storage and archiving needs, maybe the uses of the fairgrounds, maybe the use of elections as well, too. So there's a lot of conversation going on about that, and I can tell that the group is, is feeling very good about that conversation, too. And as a reminder, Commissioners, I know you know this, but just as a reminder, our lease with the state of Montana extends until the end of October 2028. So we're not talking about anything of imminently dislodging or displacing operations or things that are going on the site now, but there's a lot of potential that we see with that site and we're intending to fully explore that. So among the other things you're hearing about today, that's another, another project that we're working on. But Commissioners, I'll go ahead and end right there. Glad to answer any questions that you have today.
Just a comment, I, I am just so pleased with the management team we, we have and uh, the, the ease of communication, the ability to, to work, uh, on different projects. When something comes up that, um, we get a call from a constituent with questions, everybody responds and helps and helps us get to the bottom of it and, and take care of our, our customers, our, our constituents. And, uh, thank you all for the, the great job you do. I, I just can't, uh, can't feel but that there's any local government unit in the state of Montana that is efficient and effective as this group of people right here. Thank you. All right. All right. Thank you all for, for that and, uh, for your, for your help and your report, and I hope that the folks in the general public, uh, if they've got any questions, don't hesitate to reach out to us and we'll, uh, do our damnedest to get an answer for them. All right. Well, we don't have, I, I think this is the end of our regular agenda items. Uh, we always provide an opportunity for the, for the public to, to respond or bring up any matters that are on their hearts that, that, uh, are part of our jurisdiction as a commission, uh, but not on today's agenda. So I'm going to just ask, uh, is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? There being none, we're adjourned and thank you all.